Call the Village of New Blair's Board Meeting to Order. We'll see the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have all cell phones silenced during the meeting. I'd look for an approval of the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item five, Public Approvals and Decisions and Comments. Lynn, are you going to say anything? Okay. Item six, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Before we move approval of that, I'd like to just make a note on the minutes from 1016. Under discussion, consideration, formation, appointment of the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee. My name is spelled wrong. And another point of clarification, I don't know if it's my place or not, but in the minutes attached from the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee, there are two issues. In the discussion of committee membership, one, two, three, four, five, six, six line down noting the issue was "how", it's spelled H-O-E, it should be H-O-W. And then also under discussion, and under discussion and framework for additional village facilities research in the last line, after the library issues, probably should be "have" instead of "has". Last line of, library issues, "have", it says "has".
Okay, with all the corrections made, need a motion to approve.
Of the consent agenda.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On new board business, discussion, consideration, resolution 1832, library funding commitment.
Thank you. So at our last board meeting, we talked about what the board would like included in the new resolution, committing the village to funding, partially funding the library project. So based upon your feedback that I received at the last meeting, I put together this draft for your review and any comments or feedback that you have on it. The one other, you know, one thing we did talk about at the last meeting was minimum funding of at least or up to $1 million. And we'd asked the question of what exactly was the language from the 2014 referendum. So I included that on page 11 of your packet. And then I included, based upon your feedback, a couple of the conditions or triggers, if you will, for when we would actually authorize the borrow. And I would welcome any additions or corrections or changes you'd have to those conditions.
Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate the work that you put into this. It's not easy to draft those things. I have a couple of concerns that I wanted to raise. There are four points in the draft resolution which mention the million dollar borrow in paragraph one, in paragraph four, paragraph six, and in paragraph eight. And in keeping with the language from the 2014 referendum, my personal opinion is that all of those references should include the verbiage of "up to" one million and not "at least" one million. And I also don't really feel like this is an appropriate time for the village board to be taking action on this kind of resolution. I do believe we do need to take action on it eventually, but with the work of the ad hoc committee just getting started, and a new site not being identified, new architectural drawings not being done, budgets not being prepared, I think this is the wrong time for us to be making any type of resolution. But I do feel it needs to happen eventually, so I wanted to put that out there. And I would actually even go so far as to make a motion that we table drafting of this resolution until the ad hoc facilities committee has had a chance to complete their research and report back to the full village board.
Makes sense to me.
I would second that.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Well, I agree with the language part. But I don't understand why us committing to funding part of, you know, $1 million of the library project. Needs to be, why would we put that out? You know, I think the library board needs to know that they have that much backing.
Right, yeah.
I think that's all we're saying.
Yep, I agree. And my intent was not to, you know, encounter a situation in which we don't draft a resolution. I just would like to table it until the ad hoc committee has had a chance to perform their research and report back to the full village board. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, but I'm saying we should wait. And that was my motion.
Well, you know, it's quite possible that it could go the other way. Might need more money.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, well, that would be, I, you know, I raised that as why I said "at least". I found it's kind of interesting in the referendum that the referendum itself does say "up to", but then the explanation says the borrowing of one million. I mean, after that, it was very clear that it's a million. And being in a different, you know, being four and a half years later, we've talked about increased costs and things like that, as well as reimbursing the library board for costs incurred for Connor Park and various things like that. So, I was leaning toward just dropping either one and saying a million for sure. But again, that can be changed when the actual borrow happens.
The ad hoc committee has six months.
Of which one was eaten by delays in forming the committee, so really five.
Five months left, so that would take us to what, March? I would like to see this decided before, any changes in the board membership?
I think that there's sufficient time for that, given the timeline of the ad hoc's work and the table.
Do you think we could have some verbiage on how that money would be dispersed?
What do you mean?
When do they get that?
Well, it's all in the funding mechanism that the board could use. There's a couple of different ways you could do it. You could do, you know, just to borrow a million dollars from a local banking institution, as in they transfer a million dollars, and you have a million dollars and you transfer that to the library. You could do it through, you know, Ellers, our financial consultant, you know, as part of any other larger term borrow we would do in the future. Or you could do it as a letter of credit with a local financial institution. And a letter of credit would allow you to draw down from that million at whatever increments you'd want. You know, for example, as construction is going on, you could make payments to the, towards the project on certain increments, like it was part of the letter of credit, for example. So there's a number of different ways that the board could structure how.
Is there some guidance we could have on that, or the best way to do that?
I mean, yeah, it's definitely something I can take a look at and provide you with some analysis on, you know, what different options get you in terms of.
We can put that in the language.
I don't know that you need to include it in this resolution, but I mean, I think it's something, I can, you know, brief the ad hoc facilities committee at some point and then brief the full board on what those things are.
Okay. Another thing I'd like people to be thinking about is something that came up at the library board meeting. I think language is really important. And we're looking to work together and have a united front on this. So something that I think could also be eliminated would be in number three of the four things listed. Just not, just say operating budget for the new facility, not detailed. Every budget they've offered has been included, everything that's included in an operating budget. They've done a diligent job at getting numbers. There's lots of options for sharing operating costs, like if we were to, the village and the library were to share a cleaning service, probably get a break on the cleaning, that was brought up the other night. Some of the things they said, like mowing, perhaps the village could do that. It could be reimbursed, but that would be lesser than trying to do it on their own. All that kind of thing could be worked out. But it, just, just by, just say operating budget. An operating budget is an operating budget. I think a lot of this language is just sort of a, it feels, feels bad.
And that's, that's the language I just took from the 2015 resolution.
Right, and I knew that, Brian, I knew, just taking language in. But I think that had been put in at a time when we weren't working as well together. And that it had been, didn't feel like a cooperative kind of thing. So, just something to think about.
Yeah, it's a good point. Operating budget would probably cover all of those things, so good point. But again, like, I'll just bring it back to my motion. Like, I think that those are the types of details that we should be working out when we're actually working on drafting this at a later date. So, can I call a question? Because there was a motion and a second.
Yeah, and I only brought that up, Sean, because it would be gone now, and I just like people to have things to think about at halftime.
Well, they can be gone tonight because we're voting on whether or not to take action on this at a later date.
Right, but it'll be.
Yeah, we won't be talking at.
If it gets tabled, it's tabled for the night then.
Yep.
Well, the motion was for it to be tabled until the ad hoc committee has had a chance to do their research and report back to the full board. So whatever that timeline looks like is up to the ad hoc committee.
Would any immunity due?
No.
Nobody here.
When, maybe it's not part of this, not that I want to delay the votes, sorry, Sean. Criteria, but beyond the operating budget, what about a budget for the, like, actual project itself? Is that not?
I don't.
Well, they'll get it, when they get all the plans together, they're going to get a quote from the contractor.
Like, that's the part I'm still, like, confused about with the, like, how this goes forward is, like, is the, is the, is the project planning contingent on, like, is it a plan that's, like, we're planning for a $2 million building? Or is it, we're planning for a certain size building? You know, like, those are like two very different things, like, do you know what I'm saying? Like.
Final plans are going to depend on the budget.
Well, let you think about the actual cost, the actual final cost that we would be looking at and if it was much higher, where a million dollars would matter much, or whatever.
Yeah, like, I'm not comfortable having a resolution in place to borrow a million dollars unless all the rest of the money is in place somewhere else.
And.
Concept designs are the initial idea and the new race funds around that, but final architectural plans, as it says in here, aren't done until you know what the budget is.
So, I don't mean to cut anybody off or dismiss anybody's thoughts, but I called a question once already, so I'm going to call a question now.
That's vote on calling the question.
What's the question?
Call the question, we should vote.
We should.
Question, I think maybe there's some unanswered questions.
Yeah, so it's called, so we need to vote on that.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
A what?
A what?
What the hell are you talking about? He made a motion, he got a second, that's what he's asking.
He made a question, but then he called the question.
Called the question, technically voted on. So it would be to, basically to have the board stop discussion and immediately go to a subsequent vote to vote on the actual motion that's on the table.
And to stop discussion.
That's what it would be.
So he's saying.
We have to vote on calling the question.
Oh.
Are we done discussing?
Okay.
The point being that it doesn't make any sense for us to continue hatching out what the resolution is going to look like if there's a motion to table it. We have these conversations again in three or four months when the ad hoc committee comes back to us, so.
Okay, so we need, we're voting on calling the question.
Yes.
Okay.
Call the question means end discussion and vote on the emotion. Okay.
Brian, what does it mean?
Right, it means, it means the board is going to vote on whether or not to suspend, stop debate, and then the next motion after that would be on the original motion that Sean made after that.
If we're done debating.
If, if, if the ayes percale, yes.
I'm confused.
So this vote will determine if.
So do I just ask for?
Yes, you ask for all those in favor of ending discussion would say aye, all those opposed would be nay.
Okay. All those in favor of ending the discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Nay.
I'm opposed, that's an aye. I'm both.
Okay. I have a five to two in favor of calling a question.
Okay, now we got to vote on Sean's motion to table, which we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
After all of this, would you repeat the motion?
The motion was to table discussion on drafting a resolution until the ad hoc facilities committee has had a chance to perform their research and report back to the full board.
Are we good with that?
Seconded by a second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Nay. Whatever you want.
Motion carries.
Ministerages report?
Yeah, the one thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention is, so I've been working with the. so I've been working with the school this year and trying to schedule that joint meeting between our boards. They indicated that Monday evenings were good for them. One Monday in particular that they proposed would be December 10th at 6:00 PM at the school. So that's one option if that works.
You said December 10th?
December 10th at 6:00 PM at the school. That works for the board members. If not, then I will go back and see if there are other possibilities that will work in the next couple of weeks for both of our bodies. But I just want to bring that back up to your attention. Fireball.
Somebody else can take minutes of fireball.
Do you need our availability now?
No, but I mean, if you could let me know soonish so I can.
Okay, I'm available.
I'm fine.
Yeah, just if you want to let me know via email tomorrow, fine. If that works, then I'll get back in touch with them and let everybody know. If not, I'll find some alternate dates. I mentioned this, finance personnel committee, next board meeting will have the 2019 budget on the docket. Things are looking pretty good in terms of the final documents and the various resolutions that need to go along with that. The only major change since we talked about it in October was our state transportation aid number came back in. It was about 6,000 less than last year. We anticipated it was going to go down. So we're able to kind of adjust elsewhere in the budget. So we're fine on our expenditure restraint program. We're fine on our tax levy numbers. So we're sitting in a pretty good position to adopt that after public hearing next, at the next board meeting. And we've been talking with the auditor about ways to do some of the capital purchases that we identified for '19 with some savings that we have in '18. So we should be, we should be sitting pretty good for next board.
Okay, the only thing I would want to say is, I don't know if everybody noticed the plaque on the wall that we got from, for the budget planning. Thanks to Mr. Gatto doing an excellent job for two years.
I think it will be, once we adopt the budget on the 20th, we'll resubmit for '19. Hopefully we'll get another, another year.
Anything else?
Thanks to those folks for their work yesterday on that election. Let a turnout.
Holy cow.
Thank you.
It was a very good turnout.
Thank you.
Did we get, how many did we have?
We had 1,165 people, which is 63 people less than the presidential election. 150 more than the last midterm election. So that's.
Good work.
I was out of the room at 8:00 in the morning, so. Did you have to hold it open longer or?
No, actually, well, we had somebody write about 8 o'clock, but there were like two people. So it wasn't, it wasn't bad. And we got all our absentees in.
Yeah, it seemed like there were a lot of early voters and.
Yes, there were.
It alleviated the evening. It was all day rush.
Yeah, I don't think the line ever got past the boardroom door that I remember seeing. Yeah, that's good.
About where it was when I.
Was it? Yeah, that's about the longest, even first thing in the morning.
No, like 6:30 last night. It was. Here. I was 1,050. Two of my first students from 12 years ago. For their first time, so 12 years.
We had a high school group. Alexis staff brought up about 10 kids down, a high school group. And we took them through to see the process.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned.